The June thirteenth, Madison City Council, um, meet, meeting to order, please. And we have, uh, Pastor J- uh, J.C. Hop- Hopkins with Cornerstone Word of Life Church here. Yes, sir. You gonna lead us in prayer?
It's perfect.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Um, I just wanna say a quick prayer to start it off.
Absolutely.
Bow your heads, um, Lord, you commanded us in First Timothy two, Lord, to pray for kings and all who are in authority. So, Lord, I pray for every council member that, that they will receive your wisdom to make wise decisions. Lord, help, help them to listen with understanding. Lord, I pray that they will be excellent stewards, Lord, over their authority, have, over their authority, having the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Guide them to be the leaders of, that the people need. I pray that we come to know that it is the community and the board members' responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant the community and the board members' wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. I pray that unity prevail in this community. Help us all together to resolve issues that affect us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you Pastor.
Thank you so much. Would you join me in the pledge?
(inaudible).
Can I get the real call, please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Yes.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Um, I think there's only one change that I know of tonight on, um, the public hearings be instead of one thirty-three Amsterdam Place is zero Amsterdam Place. Any other cha-changes need to be made? Uh, we'll move with what's printed and I will ask for approval amendments to the May twenty-third meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? If not, if not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
And motion passes. There's no presentation, um, or awards tonight, we'll move into public comments.
Thank you all, I'm Angela Davis Gary. And first of all, I'd like to say, as I spoke to Chief Bailey when I first entered the room, I am very sorry to hear about the fire that took the life of one of our citizens earlier today. And I express my condolences to her, her family and to everyone that was affected by that fire and hope as a city, we will get behind all of those people that are home, without homes, without what they need to function in life. And let's really show them the love that they deserve from the other citizens around us. We can do that, no other place, no other church, nobody needs to do that but the city of Madison. So, let's please do that. I've got to talk fast because that's how y'all like it, I think. Um, I have a question, but I have to make statements and so, you know, just feel free to jump in whenever you want to. We had a audit review given to us by Warren Everett that said that the city's finances were in good shape, is that correct? Do you all agree with that? I've talked to Mayor Finley and we've been over that fifty-two times. We received the ball course payment in full, but late, is that correct? Is that how I understand that?
No, this year?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about last year or this year?
I'm just talking about.
This year's been, this year, um, was on time and everything that they were up to, they're up to date on payment.
Okay, okay, so last year, when you got like part piecemeal or what the best they could do?
Make sure, 'cause I, if you ask your questions, 'cause you're gonna lose your time and then I can answer every question you have, but yes, ma'am.
Well, okay, I just wanna know if we, did we charge a late fee for them not paying late?
No.
Why did we not?
I think we chose to be happy that we got what we did and move into this year, which was extremely success, successful. And then we'll get into more trash panda stuff down the road as far as how they continue to build off of that.
Um, was it written into the contract that there would be no late fees?
Megan? Did we, first, did we charge any late fees to ball corps on any of that, which I can't remember, I don't think we did?
No.
And then was it written into the contract that we could or couldn't?
Um, in twenty twenty, the city chose not to pursue that course of action, given the COVID experience and the fact that so much of the season was, um, delayed and truncated, um, due to the pandemic.
So, we could have, but we didn't because we chose not to, based on factors like that?
I believe that we had some provisions for interest expense on late payments, um, and I would have to review the contract to be sure. Um, but that year, the city chose not to pursue that option.
President Shaw, my time is up. There has been a, uh, a case a couple of, about a month ago where a citizen spoke and she went over her time limit and the conversation carried on and so I'm gonna ask for your permission tonight to overlook this one last item.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The consent agenda and finance committee reports contains a lot of valuable information that if you don't really study it, it can just be really looked, it can just be looked over. I mean, you just lays over it 'cause you just go, oh, consent and agenda, whatever. And I started attending finance committee meetings and I have learned so much and I'd like to thank Ms. Bartlet for that. She's taught me worlds of things or I just learned at her feet. Um, I know this may surprise one of you, but not the rest of you, that every day of my life, I get up and I Google Madison, Alabama. You would not believe the things that come up when you Google Madison, Alabama. One of the things that I found in Googling Madison, Alabama was that on June the seventh, at the city council meeting in Virginia Beach, Virginia, that the council voted there eleven to zero to unanimously provide, um, the police, the three police departments that requested it because they said, and Madison was one of them, to get six of these, um, sage, ace, le- less lethal deployment devices in twenty twenty-two. The police departments for these political subdivisions have indicated that they do not have the budgetary capacity to purchase such devices. These devices that we will be getting are twenty-five years old. Some of our police officers are not twenty-five years old. If we need those devices, is there no way we can get what we need upfront instead of getting antiques? Twenty-five years makes a antique. And they say that they have the normal wear and ti- tear even though they've been taking care of as best they could. Twenty-five years is a long time. Do you all see anything, I mean, everybody just like staring at me blankly, am I the only one that thinks that that we might not could? Instead of, we need to get grants for things and there's something in the consent agenda for a grant to get bulletproof vests. Yes, dear heavenly father, let's get he- bullet, bullet, buh, excuse me, bulletproof vests for everyone. We don't wanna lose anyone, not by fire, not by whatever. But we need to seek grants for other things and if we don't have a money problem, why are we getting twenty-five year old equipment? I don't get it.
Each one of those, each one of the departments man- manages their budget and so they're the ones that dictate what they will or won't be able to utilize based on what they have in their budget and is already in there. So, you're asking us a question, they manage themselves.
Yeah, but you're the daddy of the city and you can say yes or no.
Yeah, fair enough, thank you, Ms. Gary.
Uh, that's not an answer, Mr. Finley, and we both know it. And, um, when, how do we go about accepting those, um, when they come in? I mean, do they get shipped in and, and just hand it out or what do we do?
Uh, the police ha- I don't know what we do with that. But we can talk about this after, then.
Okay, yeah, well, uh, Mike Allen, can you say after and talk to me about that, please?
I have a little bit of information to add, if I could offer that. Um, chief will be proposing those for acceptance on the next consent agenda and so that will be a topic at the next finance committee meeting.
Okay, but I also am supposed to talk to my representative of the, uh, citizens advisory board and I don't see him here tonight, so. I do have this for each, I give you a look at it. Thank you, ma'am. And, uh, talked to a young lady at the city clerk's office this morning at Virginia Beach and she told me that it was. Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Unanimous, so.
Does anyone else like to address ma- mayor and council tonight?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm.
Thank you, thank you for your time and thank you for the extra time, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Woody Sanderson Huntsville, Alabama, and I think I, I know most of you. I've had the, the pleasure of, uh, serving, uh, as your city attorney, uh, almost twenty-five years ago, which makes me an antique, I guess, by the definition we just heard. Um, but, uh, I wanted, I, I, I felt like I shouldn't let this evening pass without, uh, recognizing and, uh, and with great appreciation the work that I've seen over the last several years from, uh, your city attorney who will unfortunately be leaving you. Uh, I've had the great honor of, of working with her regularly in my capacity of working with the, as a school board attorney and, and for Madison Utilities. And, uh, I can safely say, I think, that she's the best city attorney you've had in at least twenty years and probably significantly longer than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I, I wanna just call to, uh, express my appreciation to Megan and wish her well and, uh, and wish you well in trying to find somebody to fill her shoes. Uh, and I'll certainly look forward to working with, uh, with your next city attorney, uh, hoping that, uh, he or she is, is, uh, is, is competent and professional and has the, uh, integrity that, that, uh, Megan has demonstrated for you over these last several years.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come by and, and share that with you and, uh, and again, wish Megan well in her future endeavors.
Thanks, Woody.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, I think we all unanimously agree with that.
Amen.
So, so, Mr. Cuddler, are you wanting to, to address council now, yes, or come, come on?
Understand I have, my name is John Cole, this is my wife, Michelle Cole. We live at ten seventy Browns Ferry Road, we moved here in June of two thousand nineteen. Since that time, we've had three accidents in front of our house.
Four.
Correction, four, as of this afternoon, about what, three o'clock? Here are the pictures. Number one, that was September two thousand nineteen. Number two, October two thousand nineteen. Number three, Christmas Eve morning, two thousand nineteen. Number, this was my daughter's three weeks ago at the intersection of Mo's Chapel, Browns Ferry Road. This is number five, this was this afternoon at three o'clock. Other than my daughters, they keep hitting that Culvert Bridge to the left of our house, which is just west of our house.
The speed limit, people are not paying attention to the speed limit. Um, we are out there constantly with our daughters, walking our dogs and to see the cars fly by, they pay no regard to the forty mile an hour speed limit. Um, after speaking with some of the police officers this afternoon, I found that that stretch of land, they told me, is not deemed residential. It's, um, therefore, there's not much that they can do. There's no safe place for them to stake out in order to try to eliminate some of this problem. So, we are coming requesting some sort of safety review. Um, we're lucky that nobody has had a fatality in our yard or the two yards next to us. But that stretch between the Culvert Bridge and then the curve that goes past Mo's Chapel.
To Balch Road.
On the vault.
Yeah.
They use that as, um, a speedway.
Mm-hmm.
To take those curves, to see how they can maneuver as quickly as they can, um, especially motorcycles. Um, not to mention the large, there was a large semi this morning coming through that section where that road is just not wide enough to accommodate that.
Additionally, on Mo's Chapel Road, the next day, on May twenty-seventh, the day after my daughter's accident there at the intersection of Mo's Chapel and Browns Ferry, I was coming up for a Mill Creek School. I wasn't even a quarter mile down that road, that road's barely a mile long. An orange Dodge Challenger flew past me at least sixty mile an hour. I was doing, I wasn't even, I didn't even hit the speed limit of thirty. I followed him from a safe distance, trying to get his license plate. I did call it in to the police department. Uh, I have talked to the police, if these accidents include my daughter's accident, and I said, what needs to be done? They said, go to city council. We have talked to the city, we've talked to the police, we've talked to our, to the city council and nothing's been done. And Mr. Shaw, you said, you told me today, well, we've got an engineering and all this other kind of stuff looking at it. Sir, you told me that two and a half years ago.
Yep.
And, I mean, granted, um, a couple months ago, there were some crews out there surveying at the Culvert Bridge. They came out, they dug up and then left.
Request one more minute.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, we're requesting that, to bring it to your attention, to tell us the next steps forward for what we can do to make that stretch of road a little bit safer, um, since it is nothing but houses, even though we're not deemed residential. So, what do we do to slow down the traffic, to halt the traffic, reroute the traffic down that road? Um, we're coming to you, asking for your help.
This is a safety concern, matter of life and death. We've had four, five accidents there. There's been others, there's actually been a DUI, I witnessed a DUI stop to, in April, uh, about one o'clock in the morning, I just got home and about one in the morning. Guy flew past, caught, got him, went over and actually thanked him for it.
I think we've made our point that there, this is a.
Yeah, we, I've, I've had a couple of questions, when I, and I can get to them, I'm gonna let you finish and then, yeah.
Please.
First, what was your address?
Ten seventy Browns Ferry Road.
Thank you, I've got it, okay.
And our next door neighbors are Tina Adams.
And Doc Adams.
And Doc Adams.
Um, they've had quite a few in their yard as well over the years.
Okay, two things that we will do. One, um, when Greg tells you that, well, that's been in engineering for two years, it has. It's actually been in the budget this year. And so what we have with the new engineer, who hopefully tonight will be giving us an update on the Hughes Road piece, will then put that in his queue to figure out where it is and what we need to do. Secondly, I will get with the police department and talk about how we make sure we monitor speed through that area until we can get for sure the bridge taken care of. And we'll get you answers back at the next city council meeting at the latest.
Yes, sir.
And if you'll give your, I think you have, um, with that.
I got information.
Um, your contact information, we'll get it back to you guys, too.
Yes, sir.
I will take both of those on.
We even offered for the, um, police officers, by all means, to be able to sit 'cause they needed a safe place, I said, you can sit in the front of our yard.
Okay.
It doesn't bother us, um, if it's going to help address that problem.
Well, I will take care, I, I will take the lead on both of those from a safety standpoint and from an engineering, where we are standpoint. Get back to the entire community at the next city council meeting, get back to you guys once we have an answer.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Mayor, may I add something to that?
That road is very dark.
Mm-hmm.
And so, can we also look at lighting and, um, if that's part of the issue? I don't think it's always part of the issue because I, I think I saw you as I was driving over your black truck.
Yes.
Yes, I was behind you as you were surveying the area.
Yes.
And I saw what you're talking about and I.
I was on top of the bridge and I had my blinkers on.
Yeah.
And, yes, I took pictures from the bridge, I have those.
So, um, yes, I saw where the trees were damaged and, um, all of that and I, I know we all share your concerns, we will see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you most.
Thanks, guys. Anyone else? If not, we'll move forward with the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, finance committee is going to meet this month, next Tuesday on election day, June twenty-first at ten AM. Um, we've also independently reviewed the items on the consent agenda for this week and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? Now, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes. Uh, next is presentation of, of reports.
May I add to that, that, um, there was a donation, twenty-five dollars, from Mary Fuller to the Madison Senior Center. Sorry, just wanted to highlight that.
Absolutely.
And I couldn't see it, so.
All right.
I'd easily jump on that.
So, uh, we'll start with the reports and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, well, a couple of things. One, um, it's always, uh, enjoyable as a, a mayor for your department heads as they meet longevity times and in this case, I don't think anything's more fitting than tonight with Chief Bailey. Uh, it's his five-year anniversary, we have his five-year pin. You know, uh, Ms. Gary talked about the loss of life and when that happens in your community and, and any level, you know, um, you feel that. One of the things that I recognize and Chief Bailey, when he came in and, and a lot of this council interviewed him, talked about was the community risk side and community risk reduction in a lot of the programs that the fire department does. You know, we talk, each time I put my numbers out to the community, you know, there's architectural plan reviews, there's annual fire inspections that those guys proactively go out and do. There's so many different events that our fire department is at that in turn help us minimize community risk and there's the programs that they do. And, and in so many of that times, he's led those charges and then made sure that our guys are trained. So, in that fire, there was only one loss of life. Look, they, every time that they get in and do what they do, they do an amazing job. We're proud of, proud of our fire department, but we're really proud of Chief Bailey and his leadership and what he does. They have our full support and, uh, I wanna make sure, um, tell them how proud I am for him and especially his personal journey this year. Uh, it is so good to see you back at every one of these meetings with a full mustache, I'm so jealous. And, uh, but we're very proud of you and, and your five years chief and I wanna give this to you. And one other thing, and it kinda goes back, uh, one of the neat things about, uh, being mayor and especially in one of the ten largest cities is you get quarterly to go and meet with your peers of the ten, uh, the Big Ten mayors. And I did find out we may have slipped up one notch and, and now being number nine, that's how they have us ranked. So, um, I'm kinda surprised at that, but that's okay, it just costs us a little bit more money and that whole thing. Uh, but one of the neat things that they have with the Big Ten mayors is we had a chance to go around and talk about our community. And three of those cities are Huntsville, Madison and Decatur. And just being able to talk at a high level of the first five or six bullets, you know, Huntsville being named the number one city in the nation to live in, you know, the fact that Madison's the number one zip code, you know, the fact that, uh, Space Command still with two reports that have come out that still deem a four-star command needs to come to Redstone Arsenal. Uh, the, the fact that we are going to land spacecraft at Huntsville International Airport and that one of the primary reasons is so many of the experiments that are manufactured and come up with are, are on the arsenal, they're gonna be able to land at, at the airport and have those experiments back very quickly to get looked at. Um, uh, Amazon just announced a huge, uh, piece where they're putting a bunch of stuff in space. They need a bunch of rockets, both Aero, uh, Blue Origin and ULA are doing. I mean, all that's just in this small little area. So, it's really neat to be able to be at that table and be able to, to brag, not so much brag, but just say, here's what's happening in our community and there's a lot of neat things. With that said, one of the other things that came from one of the other cities that I wanna make everybody aware of and remind folks, the World Games are coming to Birmingham and it's July seventh through the seventeenth. And it is, I don't even know, it's, you know, like over eighty different events, everything from, uh, every ball you can probably play, but sumo wrestling, it's a lot of the events that just aren't done at the Olympics but are, still need someone to win a championship. Anyway, July seventh through the seventeenth, it's www.TWG2022.com and we wanna support those folks down there for what they're doing down there because that's a big deal to host the World Games. So, a couple PR things, one for Chief and I'm done.
Very good, start with dish number one.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Um, I forgot to mention a couple of weeks ago that councilmember Bartlet, Denzine Spears and mayor and I all went on a wonderful tour of the New Journey Middle School and it's on track and it's just gonna be a fabulous addition to our community. And, uh, it was great to see what a, a high school looks like, very different than the high school that I went to, uh, a few years ago. Um, wanted to also mention that several of us, uh, mayor and, uh, councilmember Denzine went to the Memorial Day celebration that was held by the American Legion and the Bob Jones ROTC, junior ROTC, excuse me, and, um, that's one of my favorite events of the year. My dad and my father-in-law both have a brick at the, at the veterans', um, area there and I just wanna thank them for them doing this for us, uh, every year. This Thursday, we have our first concert at Home Place Park. It'll be this Thursday at six PM and Home Place Park, the easiest way to get there is to park at the stadium and plenty of parking there and you'll be able to see, um, the amphitheater right in front of you. Uh, one of our personal favorite bands, 'cause we have a family member in it, is playing this Thursday and that's Calypso Vision. And then there are two additional dates, July twenty-first, Groove is playing and August eighteenth, The Zooks are playing. And then at the library on June tenth, uh, ET is playing, uh, Extraterrestrial. So, you have, uh, quite a few event things going on, I'm sorry, June, I'm sorry, oh, June, I'm sorry, June tenth. We had June tenth already, didn't we? June twenty-fourth, really good movie, Poltergeist, is playing. So, that, that was a family favorite, too, and, and very family friendly. So, um, that's all I have. The last thing I wanna say is I do think this is Megan's last meeting and what, uh, honor and a privilege and a joy it's been. And everybody's gonna say the same thing, you, you have just been wonderful to work with, the most patient woman I know. The mayor's the most patient man I know, you're very patient and kind and you never, you know, rebuffed. You always had a moment for us and I, I personally am gonna miss you terribly. But I know you've got big things ahead and, and it's an exciting step in, in your next, uh, chapter of life. So, we wish you well. And that's all I have, sorry.
Dish number two.
I will join Mara in saying, thank you so much, Megan. You have definitely been a bright spot here at City Hall and I appreciate all of your efforts on behalf of our city and, um, your patience in teaching all of us, um, what we need to do and not, especially what not to do, which is equally, if not more important. But, um, I am so very impressed with you and I appreciate it and I wish you only the very best. You're welcome. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was this, um, past week, we had a SEDS, which is Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, meeting for TARCOG, which is a five, um, county region and the, and the top of, it stands for, Top of Alabama Regional Council of Government is what TARCOG stands for. And so what it was, was a regional view of economic development and they had, um, stakeholders that met at Calhoun, the mayor was there and, um, the own, well, the only mayor I recognized that was there. And.
I busted in.
And, um, we had so many people that were, um, all there for the same reason, that they want the best for our region. And there was such a spirit of collaboration and willingness to listen that I was so very impressed, not only with our, um, fellow elected officials, but our, our stakeholders that came and contributed to the meeting and gave, um, insight to, um, they even had somebody like from the housing authorities that brought that point of view. And so it was just a very, very, um, very, um.
Collaborative?
Yes, collaborative is the word. It was a very impressive collaboration and I just wanted to mention that today. And thanks to mayor for showing up.
Dish number three.
I mean that, I'm just like.
I know you do. Thank you.
Uh, Megan, of course, I'd like to thank you, um, have personally and I'll do it publicly. Um, the only other thing I have is, Chief, thank you for, for your guys and, uh, you know, it's always, uh, it's always not, it's not good to have a loss of life, but at least we didn't have quite as many. Um, another one that I would like to mention is Mr. Albert Balch, who was a good friend of mine and, uh, also a friend of the community. He, he served on the Historic Review Commission and, um, and the Cemetery Commission. He, uh, spent a lot of money downtown and spent a lot of time downtown and, uh, he also has, uh, Matt Ballch, which is our public defender, um, who is, is part of, you know, part of our family. And, uh, you know, one of the, one of the things that, that Albert told, told Matt this week is, you know, Matt. they were in hospice, and he told Matt, he goes, if you're not gonna go to this week's meeting, then you owe Madison one-fourth of your paycheck for the month. So, that's just who Albert was, he was fair, he was kind, and, uh, the thing that, that he left us with is, you know, it doesn't cost, it's what he would say, it doesn't cost anything to be kind, so, um, please keep that family in your prayers, and, and keep our community in, in your prayers, that's all I have.
Issue number five.
I want to give everybody an update on an announcement we made last week about the first community meeting that we're gonna be holding here at City Hall on June twenty-second at six PM about the, uh, transition to a council-manager form of government. Uh, at that meeting, we're going to have, uh, James Ross, who served on the mayor's task force, and he's going to give an abbreviated presentation that just focuses on city manager. You may recall that the task force looked also at the topic of staggered terms. We're going to postpone consideration of staggered terms, it takes a different procedure, uh, to get that done, and we're gonna just focus on city manager and answer questions for the public. Uh, in addition, we are planning on inviting some city managers to that meeting, so that you can ask questions, because the questions that I've received so far online, uh, with the announcement, are really focused in on what does the city manager do, and what does the mayor do. So, we're going to hold two community meetings, um, at the outset, just because of those questions that have come in. The first one is on June twenty-second, we are working on a date in July when we will have our own Mayor Finley, and perhaps a few other mayors join us, who also work in a city manager, mayor, council form of government. And so that will keep it real, let you ask questions about their roles, their responsibilities, how they got the positions that they have, and, uh, we are looking forward to having that, uh, here. Uh, the first meeting will be streamed, uh, through our website, so we will be able to, um, if you are not able to attend, you can send in your questions using the link in the announcement, and we'll be doing some other, um, probably promotions next week to make sure people know about that meeting and are able to come or send in their questions in advance. And Megan, best wishes on your future, you have been a delight to work with, um, it has been my privilege to be the liaison for legal, and, uh, stay in touch, okay?
Yeah.
And that's it.
Issue number six.
Well, I'll start with that, too. Excuse me, Megan, you are just a delight, you always have that smile on your face, and you work so hard to bring together the advisory committee, and I think going forward, that might be a legacy. And, uh, I just appreciate all that you do, thank you. Excuse me. Um, before I came to this meeting, I was at the Board of Education meeting tonight. Uh, the newest member of the board was sworn in, uh, Scott Newberry. I wish him the best, he has our support, I look forward to all of the decisions that come forward from the board for the benefit of our children. And they also announced that they are going to be working on a task force. After the tragedy down in Texas, I've been, I've been contacted by parents who are concerned for their safety of their children. I went and spoke with one at their home last week, and they are just torn apart with what happened, and they don't want to see it happen here. So, I was thrilled tonight, at the Board of Education meeting, they talked about the task force they're putting together. They're gonna be looking at all the protocols that are in place, they're working with Chief Gandy, they are going to come up with what is best to protect our children, and then before school starts, they will let all the parents know, so the parents can feel safe with their children. So, I was, I was just thrilled to hear that tonight at the meeting. Um, also at the senior center, there are tons of activities going on for the actively aging. Uh, they've got a dance going on on June fourth, oops, she put June fourth, must've been July. Um, also, the, uh, June fourth, there's a Flag Day celebration tomorrow. Um, all the week between the thirteenth to the seventeenth, they're gonna be featuring Thanking Your Father, and all that fathers mean to us. Um, there's gonna be a Juneteenth celebration on June sixteenth, and then the twenty-first, it's gonna be a ice cream social. So, they're just working so hard to keep the seniors involved, keep it active, it's a wonderful place. Um, if you have the opportunity to go by, if you're one of those actively aging, it's just a delight to be there. Also, the Beuvication Board, on Saturday, there were six of us that went out to ninety different entrances to do the judging. You know those signs that say beautiful, this is a beautiful spot, well, yeah, we're the people that judge that. And I just want to thank so many of the communities that do put in the hard work to make their, their community look that much nicer, and it just brings a nicer feel to the whole city of Madison. So, I do want to congratulate all those that, we'll be having a sign again, and then to those that, uh, need to do a little extra work, um, I think next year, everything will look a little bit better. But there are people that do pay attention to that, because we believe it's important for our city to look as good as what we are, because the heart of the city is amazing. And I also would like to thank Chief Bailey for your five years, you're, you're also amazing to work with, and I thank all the firefighters for all that they've had to do lately, so, there's that. Um, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Very good. I just wanna, uh, say a thank you to, uh, to Megan also. Everybody talks about how nice she is and great she is, and that's all true, but she's also a workhorse. Everybody does, I mean, I get emails from her on Saturdays, Sundays, nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, holidays, so it's not only just, uh, what a good, what a good person you are, and, and you got us, it's, we're gonna miss, um, you always being there for us, and we really do appreciate you, Megan, thank, thank you. Onward and upward, my friend.
And can I close out, but, you know, one of the things, we're getting ready to, we have interviews in the next couple of days for your position, which we don't like, um, but, you know, one of the things I really like about what Mary Beth a lot of times adds is if, if your employer or friends would give three words about you, what would three words be? And I think work, I, I didn't, it's two words, it's workhorse, but I, I just find someone that just has such a strong work ethic, but the other two I wrote down were professional and positive.
Mm-hmm.
And this community over the last, you know, when we came in in two thousand sixteen, you know, the stability that we needed in that office, you immediately gave, and there has been a difference made since that time, and it's huge, and so it is a big loss for us, but thank goodness you're still in the county.
Mm-hmm.
It's about the only way we can bear it, and I, and I still want to go fight a couple of them, but that's okay, we won't, and we'll just be partners with them, but you have made a big difference, and we are really proud of you that you're headed that way, and glad to have someone that we now can call over there that'll answer the phone a little bit more quickly, so, thank you.
Very good, there are no board or committee appointments, we have a couple of, uh, public hearings, and we'll start with you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have one alcohol public hearing this evening. Luigi's Italian Grill Incorporated, it's seventy-five fifty-nine Highway Seventy-two West Suites, C eleven and C twelve, has requested an on- or off-premise beer and wine license. Uh, best way to describe this location would be the southeast corner of Nansen Highway Seventy-two. Uh, this is a new request for alcohol at this location, and everything's in order for this to be considered.
Open the public hearing, see if anyone would like to address councillor or mayor. If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion?
I just want to say, I've been twice, and it is fabulous. If you have not yet been to Luigi's Go, it is absolutely delicious, and such a, a positive, uh, restaurant in our area. You know, everybody's always, you know, no more fast food, no more chains, they are wonderful. Food is delicious, service is spectacular, I cannot hi- highly recommend them enough. And now there'll be a wine menu.
Now I'm hungry.
(laughing).
Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh, the second one is, uh, about the weed liens. Uh, so during the summer of twenty, uh, twenty-one to twenty-two pursuant to the city's local weed abatement act, Act Number Twenty-Sixteen dash two oh five, the city, uh, has cut overgrown grass and weeds on these properties, and now it's time for the city council to consider, um, uh, the city's cost as weed liens on the properties. We've been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing these weeds. Uh, the reports have been previously sent to the owners of, of those lots. So, now we'll open the public hearing and see if there's an owner of this property that would like to address mayor or council. Is there anyone else that would like to address mayor or council? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we will ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion?
I, I just want to say one thing, this property, it, it is kind of technically one thirty-three, because it goes one thirty-one, one thirty-five, and it's an empty lot, and ever since I came into office six years ago, every year, we, we have this address, and I, I just want to thank building for code enforcement. Um, the grass is as tall as a podium, I appreciate everything you do. I wish there was an alternative to get the lots on each side, and maybe that's something very low priority, but maybe something that we can look at where we can, um, look at a way to take this burden off of code enforcement and put it on the adjoining homeowners. Just, just a thought.
Any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
And motion passes. Alright, we'll move into the, uh, department reports, and we'll start with engineering.
Hi, alright, I've got just one item, uh, on the engineering report. It's Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Two One Sixty-Two R, approving professional services agreement with Cons- Consulting Construction Engineering LLC for electrical engineering services for the Oakland Spring Stormwater Pump Station, the amount of two thousand dollars to be paid from departmental budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? And can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Motion passes.
Uh, before I go, just want to offer you guys a little update on, uh, Hughes Road, uh, widening project. We, uh, you might have noticed there were some crews out there working today. We had a concrete, concrete contractor to come out to start working on some of the connections for the drainage, um, systems out there that need to be done, um, hoping to get some crews out here to lay some pipe up by Eastview Road, so we can get that, uh, intersection rolling again, and then get some crews out here to do some road widening projects in the, in the coming weeks, uh, also part of that, get some, uh, seeding done on the east side. So, we've got, we've got some, don't have some hard schedules yet, they're still getting some revised pricing back to us, but we've talked about a, a general schedule, trying to get what, you know, where we can get started and get going, um, you know, sooner rather than later, but, uh, we had to do a little redesign, took out the sidewalk for now, that was the cause of most of the con- uh, conflicts with the utilities. Um, hopefully with some of those, some of the money we get back from savings on that, we can use towards, uh, updated pricing, you know, since this contract was signed back in twenty nineteen, so there's been obviously some, you know, you know, you know how that goes. Possibly we can do the sidewalk thing later in the future, uh, but for now, we want to get this project going, get the traffic flowing.
Very good.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
On behalf of the people living along Hughes, thank you so much, getting this moving.
Yeah, and so, and I think one of the things with all the utility conflicts, there's, I mean, this takes up seventy-five, eighty percent, I mean, a large amount of them we're talking, yeah.
Right, right, we, we, we looked at a couple of different options, just to try to keep, the, the, the big safety issues out there, driver expectations, we've got all these barrels out here, we want to make sure that the lanes are lining up with the signals, and we get these, these pedestrian areas back, back opened up, and, you know, we could wait several years while we try to procure, um, materials and go through redesigns of water lines and various other utilities. This is a good way for us to get going on it, get traffic flowing, get the, get that particular, um, pedestrian crossing and signal rolling for the next school year, that kind of stuff, so that was our priority here. And if we want to look at the sidewalks on that east side going forward, it's something that we can do, do, do a little bit, uh, a better job doing some surveying, figuring out where the utilities are and how we can kind of deal with those when we get to that point.
A lot more fact, I say fact, but nail down even more next council meeting, and we'll just keep going from there. It is their number-one party that they're working on right now.
You need to provide updates every, every council meeting.
You don't want to overpromise.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police.
Good evening, I've got, uh, two items for you. First is Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Two One Sixty-Two R, which is authorizing amendment to the memorandum of understanding for participation in the North Alabama Drug Task Force. Uh, that's an organization that we've been a part of for a while, there's new verbiage in it that allows for the FBI to get involved with it as well, so that's what that one is.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Motion passes.
Right, and number two is Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Two One Seventy-R, which is authorizing a grant application for bulletproof vests. Uh, this is a grant through the Department of Justice, a fifty-fifty matching grant. Uh, we're looking for sixteen vests this year, I believe, of cost for the city's seven thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars, and then the DOJ will pick up the other half of that, too.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? Can, can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, with the long list tonight.
Nice hat.
But a lot of first readings.
A lot of first readings.
(laughing).
Alright, your first item, three items are, uh, first readings. So, you have proposed ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two Dash One Fifty-eight, and this is to vacate a portion of utility and drainage easement in the backyard, um, you can see that shaded blue area, somebody's wanting to put a pool in their backyard, and most of their backyard is in an easement, uh, so, um, at your next meeting, we'll be asking you to approve the vacation of that. All of the respective departments and agencies have signed off on this. And this is on Cliffworth Place. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, your next item, also a first reading, is proposed ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Two Dash One Fifty-nine, and this is, um, a vacation of a, um, an old, um, well, it used to be a parcel, you can see that little triangular area, I'll just point it out, right, whoops, right there for you, this little triangle, right there, used to be a parcel, and, um, that parcel, it was a remnant parcel, um, that was just kind of floating out there in space, and so we've, uh, the property owners have kind of come to an agreement, um, that parcel has now been, um, made a part of the larger parcel to the south, um, it's right adjacent to Five Sixty-five, and so, um, this is really just to get rid of those little easements that are around the, uh, the triangle, uh, the two sides of the triangle, because they're no longer needed. Ready for next? Alrighty, so we have proposed ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two Dash One Sixty, and again, another vacation of easement, and so, um, this, um, property is just across the street, so north is gonna be, uh, on the left hand side, I don't know if you can all rotate that or not, but, um, there's two easements on this property. One is very large, it goes like all, all of this, it's all connected as an easement, and then there's this other one right there, so this is all connected together, and then this is the other one. And, um, these are just old, you know, utility and drainage easements. There's been a project approved, um, for part of this parcel, and this is just clean up, so that a project could move forward. Um, I will, I'll leave it at that, any questions? Okay. Alright, so your next item, we do need you to take action on, hopefully, is proposed ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Two Dash One Forty-seven, and this is to, uh, vacate a utility and drainage easement, and also an ingress and egress easement. This is at the corner of Town Madison Boulevard and Zirat Road, this is where Starbucks is being constructed. These are old easements based upon, you know, what was expected, you know, twenty years ago, and we don't need them anymore. So, we're asking for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
And motion passes.
Thank you. And the last planning item is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one sixty-four dash R. This is a change order. Um, we don't have an exhibit for this, but, um, this is a change order related to Ballpark, to a Toyota field for field replacement. You'll recall back in December of last year, you approved a contract for forty-nine thousand dollars. That was the city's contribution to, um, some field and drainage improvements. Um, the project's been delayed due to cost increases that we're seeing in the construction industry, um, cost of labor, et cetera. Um, there is a change order request from the River Region, which is the, um, firm that would be doing all of this work for eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so we are asking for your approval of that. We do have funds available in our maintenance fund for the ballpark to cover this cost.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
When is this field being replaced?
It will be done in October after the football game.
Good, good timing.
We have a short window, but, um, all parties think that it is doable.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Cory, come on down.
Good evening. I have Resolution twenty twenty-two one sixty-one dash R approving professional services agreement with Crowe Engineering for design and pre-construction services for Palmer Park update and the amount of a hundred and one thousand, uh, three hundred and four dollars. Uh, this is for the second phase of Palmer Park, uh, master plan. Uh, this includes a fourplex at the front of the park and a redirection of the road in addition of some parking. Um, this is, this is the right work to help us come up with an actual design.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
And motion passes. Thank you, Cory.
So if we don't do this one, does she have to stay?
Yeah. We can continue it.
You move to continue it.
Um, first of all, I just wanna say thank you all so much for your kind words earlier. It really means so much to me. Um, I never imagined eight years ago when I came to City Hall as a legal intern that I would have the opportunity to do this job. And I have all of you to thank for that and especially the mayor. Um, and I have all of you to thank for my next new opportunity too. So thank you so much. Um, and I'm so glad that it's not goodbye, it's just see you around because I'll be able to look out for Madison in my new job at the county. So thank you all so much and just don't hesitate to reach out if you ever need me. Um, and to conclude, I have one item for tonight and this is Resolution twenty twenty-two one sixty-six R. This is to authorize a permissive use agreement with Madison Utilities for the park property located at Windstone Park, which is pictured on the screen above. Uh, this is located in the Windstone subdivision, south of Morning Vista Drive, which is close to Horizon Elementary School. And Madison Utilities has asked for this agreement because they have an existing sewer lift station on the property and they want to add an additional service building. This request is in line with the authorities that they have under their franchise agreement. We would propose that we deed this property to Madison Utilities,